Lancaster Planning Commission. At seven o'clock on August 18th in the session. If you please rise. The invocation this evening will be given by Bill Bennett. He's with, on the staff of Grace Resource Center. Ms. Bennett?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, for this time that we gather together for the business of this city. It's a city that you've blessed with people who are serious about civic duty and people who want to make this place a place that's safe, a place where families can live and enjoy life. And I thank you for them, Lord. And I know how hard they all work. And I pray a special blessing upon them tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. If you'd join me in the renewal to the pledge to our flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Commissioners Berkey.
Here.
Haycock.
Here.
Molly.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chairman Voss.
Here.
Commissioners Irvin.
Jacobs. Absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. As Commissioner Irvin is on special assignment somewhere in the world with us today and may not be returning for at least one more meeting. Mr. Jacobs is otherwise engaged this evening with his employment and unfortunately is unable to attend. He may join us later depending on how late we go tonight. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 21st, 2008. You have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 21st, 2008.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion passes five zero.
The next item is, or the next items are continued public hearings. The first item is Conditional Use Permit Number 0602 and Tentative Tract Map Number 69776. So it would be in order to open the public hearing this evening and the staff report will be by Sylvia Donovan.
Sorry? Chairman Voss and Commissioners. The applicant is Marinata Development Company. The project is located on the southwest corner of Avenue K and 30th Street West and is approximately five gross acres. The request is to construct 35,000 square foot commercial center, including a 2,000 square foot restaurant with onsite sale of alcoholic beverages and the division of property into four parcels in the CPD zone. The parcel map to divide the project into four parcels is not needed to build the project, so the project can be built without the parcel map going forward. Access into the site would be provided from a 30-foot wide drive aisle on Avenue K and from two drive aisles on 30th Street West. The northern driveway would be limited to right turns and the main driveway, the 35-foot wide, would be limited, would be designed for full turning movements. Avenue K and 30th Street West are designated as increased capacity intersection, which warrant additional improvements. A right turn lane would be provided on K at the intersection with 30th Street West and on 30th Street West into the northerly drive aisle. A transition lane is provided into the driveway on Avenue K for visibility and ease of access. The lane would begin from the adjoining property to the west of the site and the applicant has worked with the representative of Bethel Baptist Church and School to relocate the driveway on Bethel's property to the west and replace landscaping block wall and to provide a transition into the center. Conditions have been placed in the staff report to reflect these conditions. The commercial retail center as proposed meets the municipal code standard for parking. And staff has had the opportunity to speak with the representative of Marinata and the applicant has agreed to increase the stacking area from the driveway on Avenue K to approximately 60 feet in length, so that would provide enough stacking area for three cars there. The applicant has also indicated that they would provide a revised site plan, which they gave me right now, but for approval should you, should the commission choose to approve the project. The traffic study recommended implementation of specific mitigation measures, which includes a traffic signal at the intersection of 20th Street West and Avenue K, which is currently operating at less than acceptable level of service. The applicant would also pay their fair portion to construct the signal. The study also indicated the project affects the intersection of K4 and 30th Street West. Therefore, the applicant would be conditioned to re-stripe the street from on both sides of Avenue K4 to 30th Street West, approximately 100 feet east and west of 30th Street West. The site plan indicates adequate landscaping would be provided for the project and the applicant has worked with Bethel Baptist Church and is placing a chain link fence along the southerly 300 feet on the western portion of the site, on the property line with Bethel Baptist. From that point on, the applicant would put a block wall to separate the properties. Delivery hours for the project would be limited between 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM and the architectural elevations submitted indicate traditional storefronts, flat roof and parapet features, varying parapet heights, geometric angles and taller tower features proposed to add visual interest and diversity. An entryway feature at the pedestrian access provides prominence at the intersection. Included in the application is a request for alcohol. The applicant has requested approval of 2070 square foot Shop A building to be used as a restaurant for onsite sale of alcohol. Distance requirements do not apply as it is a bona fide restaurant. As for mitigation measures, mitigation measures were established with the general plan and zone change that was previously approved in February. Staff believes that this project would establish a commercial center that would provide a variety of goods and services not currently available in the area. The proposed conditions of approval will ensure that the commercial retail center operates in a manner consistent with contemporary retail strategies of customer convenience. Staff is recommending that the commission approve the request subject to the proposed conditions. The project has sufficient area to accommodate the proposed development, adequate access and service are available, are being available for the use and lack of significant adverse effects on the surrounding property. Therefore, staff is recommending to the commission approval of the conditional use permit and parcel map. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this project.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. When I announce it on our agenda, it calls a tentative tract map, but in fact, as you've pointed out, it is a tentative parcel map, right? Okay. So just, so the record's clear on that. All right. Any questions of the Commissioners before we ask the applicant? None? All right. We can hear from the applicant, please. Assuming the applicant wants to offer something.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dave Garrison. I represent Marinata Development, 3835 Burt Street, Newport Beach. Over the past 18 months, we've worked very, very closely with staff. As you know, we went through a condition, heard the environmental impact report, traffic reports. I think we've done everything that we needed to do to satisfy the concerns of the adjacent property owners, the city and as well as the staff. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I know that she kind of went through it kind of fast, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Just wait a moment, you may have some. Thank you, Mr. Garrison. Anyone?
I was curious, the restaurant, has it been secured? Who will be the tenant of the 2000 square foot restaurant?
No, it hasn't been formally secured. We can't do much until we get a conditional use permit.
Anyone else? Condition 11 was amended and you've reviewed that? I'm assuming, or this?
Sorry, I have to look at condition number 11 as I don't recall specifically what that condition was.
It's on page two of the conditions of approval?
Yes, we already have a signed agreement with the church. Could I get the site plan back up? I'll take just a couple of minutes.
That's fine. Take whatever time you feel is necessary. Thank you.
The driveway in question is, this driveway was relocated. It is currently in this location right now and because of the main driveway that they have, there was a very tough turn to make in here. So in working with staff, we had them dedicate additional right away and we have volunteered to make those physical improvements to relocate the driveway as well as, I think there's a small wall involved, there's some additional landscaping that we will be putting in concurrently with our project. But that agreement is signed.
Right. So you're okay with 11?
Yes. I have no problem with condition 42.
No? All right. Very good. I noticed in the, in the checklist for compliance of the, that was originally approved when the general plan was revised, it talks about dust control under C6 where it indicates grading would cease when the wind speed exceeded 25 miles per hour. And I, you have no problem with that either?
No, we're governed by all of the degrading ordinance that the city has and I'm sure there's state and federal and there's all kinds of rules and regulations that we have to follow.
Yeah, since it's an improved neighborhood, that's.
Yes.
We're pretty sensitive to those issues.
Understand that, so are we.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you. Any other questions from anyone? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any speaker cards, Mr. Lutowski?
Not on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then without objection, we'll close the public hearing. It would be appropriate for a motion on this item.
I adopt Resolution Number 08-01 approving Conditional Use Permit Number 06-02 and Tentative Parcel Map Number 69776.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, in further discussion, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next item, number three, is Tentative Tract Map 66680, Tentative Parcel Map 69747 and So the public hearing is open on this item. We have on file a letter indicating that the applicant has reviewed the conditions and they have no objection to the conditions as offered by staff, right? Okay. So if anyone want to hear a staff report or are you satisfied with moving it on? All right. Then we'll waive the staff report and if the applicant is here and wishes to make comments, we're certainly willing to listen to him.
Hi, I'm Bob Wilkerman with PHB and Associates. I'm actually engineer. The applicant representative had an emergency, is not going to make it tonight, but if there are any questions, I can answer them.
All right, sir. Well, thank you very much. Hang on just a moment, I don't know if anyone has any. Anyone? None? All right, thank you. Any speaker cards on this item, Mr. Lutowski?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Then it would be in order to close the public hearing and consider a motion on this item.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 07-54 approving Tentative Tract Map Number, excuse me, 66680, Tentative Parcel Map Number 69747 and Tentative Parcel Map Number 70303.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Motion passes five zero.
Is your new public hearing on the downtown Lancaster specific plan and environmental impact report? Is general plan amendment 0801 and the downtown specific plan SP 0801. It would be in order to open the public hearing on this item and staff report, I'm assuming,
I'm going to address you from here on this, so I've got a bit of a presentation for you. The item that is before you is a request for a general plan amendment and a adoption of a specific plan for the downtown Lancaster area. Associated with that, these would be cases that you would be making a recommendation on to the city council. In addition to that, you would also need to make a recommendation on the status of the environmental document, in this case, the environmental impact report that has been prepared for the downtown specific plan. The downtown specific plan represents the culmination of somewhat over two years of effort that have really been a community-based effort to create a long-term regulating plan for our downtown area. This effort began in 2006. We have utilized the services of RBF Consulting and specifically their Urban Design Studio in this effort. We have engaged the community and I'd like to go through with you a little bit of a presentation that explains the downtown specific plan and in particular, the primary element within it that makes it unique for our city and that is the form-based code. This is actually a presentation that was given by RBF Consulting back in spring of 2007 when they first gave us the initial draft of the form-based code. And I think it is still very, very valid in terms of explaining what a form-based code is, how the overall structure of the downtown specific plan is laid out and why it's the proper choice, we believe, for the long-term plan for our downtown area. I'm going to go over with you briefly the downtown specific plan and introduction to form-based codes, what the specific form-based code is for downtown Lancaster as contained within the specific plan and an example of how that code is used. The downtown specific plan itself consists of six basic chapters. The first one, which is a summary and an introduction and guide to the specific plan. The second, also some additional introduction. Chapter three goes over in some detail the community-based outreach effort that we use to develop this plan. Chapter four covers a number of the basic development plans that are contained within the downtown specific plan. Part of that is a requirement to meet the requirements of state law. And chapter five, the form-based regulating code, which is probably the key element, as I said. And chapter six, which is different ways in which the downtown plan can be implemented in the coming years. Form-based zoning. Form-based zoning is essentially a set of development regulations that places emphasis on the placement and form and design of buildings as the primary emphasis of the regulations. This is in contrast to what you generally find in a conventional zoning ordinance where the primary thing that you are concerned about is usually land use, what kinds of uses are allowed. And it's not that form-based codes don't care about the type of use, it's just that they don't have the same primacy or weight that they would in a conventional zoning. And this kind of diagram lays that out for you. As you see in conventional zoning, use and density is the primary thing. In a form-based code, use and density have some place, but the primary focus and emphasis of the code is on the urban form that is actually created. This is why we feel that the form-based code approach is proper for our downtown. What we're really attempting to do over the years downtown is create the kind of environment and the kind of visual appearance that will make the downtown a unique area, a unique place and, you know, really, really make the statement that this is the heart of our community. Conventional zoning tends to result usually in a lot of separated and divided land uses. Spends a great deal of time explaining how large you can make lots and so forth. Conventional zoning tends to rely largely, as I said, on the kinds of uses that are allowed, the density that you're allowed, setbacks, building height. In many ways, it's a code that says, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this, but about anything else you do is fine. The result of that is that you can come out with a lot of different looks in the same kind of zoning classification. There are a lot of challenges with conventional zoning, especially if you're trying to do the kinds of things that we would like to do in the long-term downtown. For starters, it makes it very difficult and sometimes illegal to build what you would call traditional mixed-use buildings, neighborhoods or districts. Here's some examples of what you'd call more traditional forms of development. In many cases where you have zoning codes that require a separation of uses or other development standards that make it difficult to do this, you can't achieve the kinds of things that you would want to achieve in our downtown. things that you would want to achieve in our downtown. It really creates, as I indicated earlier, a lack of certainty. No one's quite sure what you're going to get through a conventional zoning code. And this I would give as an example. All of these are examples of multiple-family residential. They can all fit within the same zoning classification, but as you can see, there's no consistency in design, no consistency in how they relate to the street or to other properties. This is really not something that we would want to encourage in our downtown area. Here's another example. These actually are all office buildings of some kind. You can see they range from the very modern one that's on the lower right-hand corner to the conversion of older houses into office buildings. But again, it gives you the idea that you may get a wide variety of things under conventional zoning that really would make it difficult to use it in our downtown setting. And finally, well, not finally, but importantly, it can really give density, height, and certain types of uses a bad name. You know, I think we've all seen this in some form or another where you get the use going in next to other uses that exist. It may well be in conformance, and is most likely in conformance with the zoning, but once again, that zoning code isn't telling you how the appearance of that development should look. As opposed to this, this is an example of an older house that's actually been divided into apartments. So you could have apartments that are this style, or you could have apartments that are that style. And you really don't, in an area like our downtown, want to leave that kind of choice And it does little to improve the design of the public realm. You know, these are typical things that we see as a result of conventional zoning codes. Hard to probably see from where you're at. One of my favorites, something to think about if you're trying to create a pedestrian environment, is there is actually a pedestrian standing in the middle of that roadway on one of those medians, probably not thinking that it's the friendliest place they've ever been to. And once again, this is something that you want to try to control as a part of the overall design through a form-based code approach. And finally, does result in a confusing, time-consuming, and frustrating design review process. Architects, you know, will work for a long, long time bringing buildings forth, and they're not quite sure what you're going to end up with. Are they going to get approval? Are they going to get rejected? A form-based code gives them more certainty in that process. And form-based zoning is different. It starts with a detailed vision for the neighborhood or the district. And this is what we did in our downtown. Now, these are not pictures of our particular outreach effort or of the community that we're in here, but it does illustrate the same sort of approach that we went through. We had a three, what was called a three-day downtown immersion effort in May of 2006, and that brought together a number of different stakeholders from the community into the process. It consisted of walks through the downtown. It consisted of explanations of different ways you do planning in downtown areas, and ultimately resulted and culminated in a design charrette process on a Saturday in which people really got the opportunity to say what they would like the downtown Lancaster area to be. Kind of following this one for just a moment, you can see that the work that was done here ultimately led to a vision plan for this particular community. A regulating plan is then created to implement that vision. And in this particular case, this is some of the work that was done to do that. Building form standards are then created to regulate physical form, to control the types of problems that we noted earlier the conventional zoning has with buildings. And as I said, the code itself spends a great deal of time describing the type of building, the placement on the property, and the kinds of things that you need to do in terms of architectural detail or form to make sure that it conforms with what the community's vision is. Architectural standards, once again, descriptions, pictures, examples of the types of things that the community is trying to encourage in this particular area. And also block, street, and public space standards. I mentioned the street problem earlier. Form-based codes often contain within them cross-sections or other types of diagrams that say if you're going to revise streets, or if you're going to create public space areas, here are the standards that you need to follow to do that. This is some pictures of our downtown charrette effort that was done in May of 2006. We involved, as you can see, children as well as interested adults. All in all, we had about 150 people who participated in this overall outreach effort. Quite a good involvement, we think, from the community. This is the framework that came out of that charrette and downtown immersion effort. One of the things that I found personally very interesting was that many of our citizens do not view downtown as one entity. They view it as a separate series of places. For that reason, the downtown specific plan does divide the downtown area into a series of districts. And each of those districts has within it a certain type of a theme, and it's designed not only to enhance the overall experience of going from one area to the other, but it's important in trying to make sure that what's done long-term downtown blends in well with what exists immediately around it, particularly as you move south. As you can see, kind of the yellow area that goes along the southern end is really designed to provide a transition into that existing residential area that's south of downtown. As you can see, kind of the picture that's on the right, the plan view, that is the vision plan that was drafted from the comments of our citizenry. That was actually brought back before them in a meeting about two months later. They had the opportunity to comment on that and really answer the question, "Did we get it right?" They had comments on it. The open house, you can see, occurred in July of 2006, and there were some comments, and we did make some adjustments based upon what they had to say. The final vision poster was put out. This became the basis for creating the form-based code that I talked about. The draft regulating code, we began to review at a staff level, things that RBF's people prepared, and we compared that against the vision that we attempted to create. The components of the regulating code, the form-based code, as you can see, are laid out here. Oops. Well, that'll work. As I mentioned before, the form-based code divides the downtown area into a series of districts. This map illustrates what those are. They range from kind of the Central Boulevard district area that really occupies the center to the transit-oriented district that's on the far east end near the MetroLink area, the gateway area that is at the, surrounds the intersection of 10th West and Lancaster Boulevard, as well as the neighborhood office district on the south and the commercial financial area in the green. The second thing that a user would do in terms of trying to figure out what they can do through the form-based code is they would review what kinds of land uses are allowed. Now, as I said before, form-based codes do have some say about land use, but they tend to say it in this kind of a format. Very simple matrix simply indicates the different districts. If it were larger, you could see the districts are indicated across the very top of the matrix, and there's a list of the general types of uses that are permitted. This code, or this matrix, then can allow someone very quickly to see whether something is permitted, something requires a different level of approval, or for some reason, it may not be allowed, and in certain cases, that is true. The third step, they would review the types of building plans and the regulating plans to find out what's allowed within the particular area they're located. I wish this showed up a little better, but this essentially is a drawing of the different types of building forms that are allowed within the downtown specific plan. And it's important to note that not all of these are allowed in every district. Some districts allow most of them. Some districts actually exclude certain of them. For example, the downtown Boulevard district does not permit detached single-family houses, and that makes sense in an area where you're going to have five-story buildings, mixed-use types of approaches encouraged. Another thing that I would point out, as you look at this, it's tempting to look at some of these building forms and begin to equate them with certain kinds of uses. But it's important to note that, for instance, a courtyard building, although it may have, looking at this, a residential appearance, may well house commercial or office, or a mix of residential, commercial, and office altogether. It's the form of the building that's really the key. The plan also contains examples. It'll show you, this is the type of building we're talking about for a commercial block building. Here's what we're talking about for a traditional Main Street building. Here's an example of kind of a live-work loft arrangement, and so on. All of these contain within them illustrations so that people can visually see the type of things that we're trying to, you know, encourage. Step four in using the form-based code, people need to review the regulating plan and determine what types of buildings are allowed on the property. Here's an example of that Boulevard district I was telling you about. And as you can see, the plan breaks down the types of buildings that are allowed within each subpart of this overall district. The next thing you would do is look at the development specifications for the applicable building type. Each one of these sheets, or the sheets cover each one of those types and describes the placement of the building, the types of roof forms that you're allowed. And as people would go through it, they would follow through. A purpose and intent section essentially says, "This is what we're trying to create through this building type in this area." Once again, illustrations to be user-friendly. A description of what you can do on each floor of that building. If you have a multi-story building, certain uses are allowed on certain floors or certain portions of the building. This is important because, for example, if you are trying to create a walkable street area, you don't want to create a situation where you've got a parking garage that's on the bottom floor facing your main Boulevard area. You want that to go in another part of the building where it's not going to adversely affect pedestrian walkability or the appearance. So that's the reason for that type of regulation. Description of the different types of appearance on windows and form and mass, examples of where the buildings have to be located and what different portions of the property can be used for. And once again, more details on the type of roof form and how various floors in the building are allowed to be used. There are always exceptions within any code, and once again, the code here does contain that ability. If there's something that doesn't meet quite the strict requirements of the form-based code but essentially is in keeping with the purpose and intent, there is a process to review and allow that, if applicable. And then finally, someone would need to go and look at what kind of building heights are allowed. One thing that I think is very important within the code, and this has been modified a little bit from when this presentation was originally done, but essentially, the code allows the most intense building to occur centered along Lancaster Boulevard and over along Sierra Highway near the MetroLink station. From that point, the heights begin to work their way down, so that by the time you reach the area adjacent to the existing single-family neighborhood, for example, on the south side of Milling and New Grove, those heights have reduced down to the point that they are compatible with those building forms that are already in existence. An example of how that works here, showing how that setback approach works for those buildings. Step seven, someone would need to go through and look at the various landscape and other design regulations that are contained within the code. These are the details and other types of things that show what we want the building to look like and how we want it to be detailed. Finally, I'll close with an example of how this code in practicality could be used. And this happens to be a site that is within the downtown area. It's a site that's already built, but this is at the northwest corner of Elm and Lancaster This particular example says that if somebody had this as a vacant piece of property, how would they use the code to determine what they can do? First thing, as we said, they need to find out what district they're located in, and in this case, they are in the Boulevard district. Once they find that out, they go and they find what types of building forms are allowed. In this case, it's what they call Main Street commercial-type buildings. They would go through, check, as I said, all of the various requirements that are applicable to it, describing the type of use by floor, describing building placement. As you can see, being a corner property, they would be required to wrap the building along those street frontages. And therefore, by using that, they would have an idea and an understanding of where that building would need to go. Then they would take a look at how that building is masked, how the roof, what kind of roof form is allowed, what kind of height. And they could come out with a building that, you know, under the form-based code, would look something like this. Once again, they need to go back, look at how the windows are required to be done, ornamentation on the building. Once again, take a look at those particular projections that are allowed, or in some cases required. Being as we live in a hot climate, protection of windows and so forth is considered a pretty important factor. And those details then become part of that building. They go back, and they would have to look at the design regulations, as I said. But this kind of gives you an example, as I said, of how you get, using the form-based code, to the type of building form that would be allowed. Now, could they do a building different than this? Certainly. But in basic form and in its placement, it would be very, very similar to what you see. So that's an example for you, and kind of a quick rundown on the form-based code approach. I had mentioned to you in the study session that this was the first attempt at a form-based code in Lancaster. I discovered, actually, that's not entirely true. The Amargosa Creek specific plan does actually contain elements within it that are form-based in nature, but this is obviously much more directed towards that end. And as I said, I think it is appropriate for our downtown area. We would recommend, from a staff standpoint, that you recommend, adopt the resolution, recommending to the city council certification of the environmental impact report, the approval of both the general plan amendment and the downtown Lancaster specific plan, in accordance with the findings that we have attached for you to your resolution. I know that's a lot of information. I hope it wasn't too much to sit and listen through. If you have any questions, I would be happy to help answer them for you. We also do have a representative this evening from RBF Consulting. They can give you more background, if you would like, on the development of the code and the things that they may see in it that would be helpful for you to understand.
Thank you, Mr. Ludiki. Commissioners, have any questions of Mr. Ludiki?
Is this presentation available online right now? It is not. The form-based code itself, as well as the environmental document, are, but the presentation is not. I was going to mention aesthetically, it's hard to argue with this approach. It looks very nice. It'd be nice to have our downtown looking like this. What negatives come along with this? Are there any other cities that have done it that have lost businesses because of this approach, or anything of that nature? I don't know. One thing that I think is important to point out is that the form-based code does not require anybody to change anything that they've got on the Boulevard right now. It does, however, set It does, however, set the parameters and the requirements that they would have to follow should they rebuild the site, should they look at doing extensive modifications to an existing building. But theoretically, someone could maintain what they currently have for a long period of time. I think that RBF, in looking very carefully at what was in the downtown area, tried very, very hard to find building forms, roof forms, and so forth that matched, to a large extent, what was already down there. And that is so that as the area develops and evolves over time, you don't get too much of a real sudden shock. The one thing that I think you might notice, and we've got it actually happening right now, there's an Artis Lofts building, for example, that's under construction right now on Lancaster Boulevard. As I mentioned, the height limit that's allowed within that area is five floors. That is going to be a five-floor-high building. It will be kind of interesting to see how it looks in terms of scale with the area around it. Working within our downtown area, one thing that, you know, I like to note is that it's a very authentic downtown, and that means that, like downtowns of its type, it's going to evolve over time. People talk about dimensions of design, you know, height, width, depth, but there's always another dimension that's important, and that's the dimension of time. And in our downtown area, that's a dimension that has certainly led to, in many cases, what it looks like now. It will continue to affect, to a great extent, what happens in the long term. One thing I like to do at times is if you look from the east end of the Boulevard to the west, you can almost watch the progression through the years as the town, you know, developed away from the original railroad station site and moved westward. You can see the change in the buildings over time from the 1930s art deco look that you have at Sierra Highway and Lancaster Boulevard to, you know, the very, I don't want to use the word stark, but very, very common grocery store look that you have in what, depending on how long you've been here, is either the old S&amp;S Building or the old Avon's Building or the old Safeway Building, depending on your length of residence. But it's kind of interesting to watch that. That kind of evolution is something that happens within areas like downtown Lancaster. You don't get it in places like Victoria Gardens, where you basically have a shopping center that's been built in a very short amount of time, although they've gone to a great deal of work to try to make it look like it developed over a great amount of time. So I think, you know, I think one of the negatives, if you want to look at it that way, is that there's no guarantee that with the code, anything will change in the next two years, five years, 10 years. It's going to be very dependent on the market and what the demand is down in that area. That's probably a very long answer to your question. Thank you. I have a certain amount of passion on this subject.
I know that after our study session last Monday, I was extremely excited. There's, you know, and excited about the fact that you brought in a lot of people to make comments, make recommendations about what the residents of the city wanted to see in their downtown area. So, great work. I'm very impressed, and hopefully, I'm around to see the whole culmination of this beautiful downtown area, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. And certainly, staff is to be commended and the community for the participation over the last two years plus. It is interesting to note that elements of your Form-Based methodology happen to fit within other design shretts as well, and it'd be interesting when the new Design Planning Commission gets seated, maybe they'll be interested in looking at some of these elements too. They're very attractive. Great work, thank you. And before we go on, we have a visitor this evening who happened to stop by, Mr. Lutowski.
Okay.
I think our city manager stopped in to say hello, Mr. Bozicki. Welcome. Nice to have you here. All right.
We do have speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Very good. Let's have them, please.
Okay.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Merrill McLernan, I am an architect. I have an office at 759 West Lancaster Boulevard, and I've been practicing architecture there or right next door for the last 11 years. This is exciting. I participated in the design shred, just kind of as an observer and help sketch, that's all I did. But the specific plan and a Form-Based Code is kind of a predetermined guideline for me, my client, and the interaction between you and the design council to be seated, to tell everybody what we can do before we even start. I'm not guessing in my job at all. It's very, it's open-ended as far as what you're going to do, but how. It's very specific, and it's kind of exciting. Some architects would look at it as limiting. I look at it as an opportunity, so I definitely support it, and I look forward to being a part of it. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome.
Chairman Boz and members of the commission, I want to thank you for hearing this item this evening. It's one of those things that I've kind of been waiting for, ever since we began working on the project. As much as I'm glad to see it come about, I'd really rather be somewhere else. I'd rather have dinner at the Lemon Leaf this evening and then go see Michael Bolton at the Performing Arts Center. But, you know, it's not about tonight. We're talking about the future, and certainly, the specific plan is all about the future of downtown. You know, I talked to some of our older business owners who have been downtown a while. Cheryl Pullos from George's Cleaners is celebrating 60 years of business downtown and the dreams that they had in terms of seeing downtown return to its prominence within the city. And I think the last three years, we've worked to try and put those pieces back together and really rebuild downtown into a great center of our community. And I want to say thank you to the staff, certainly Brian. I don't want to know how many hours you have in on this, but it's a lot. And RBF, RBF was great to work with, and certainly, they really did take the will of the people and try to implement it into this plan as best they could. I also want to thank the members of the Lancaster Old Town Site, which I am the president of, for their work in terms of looking at ways that we can partner as the business representative organization in downtown to make this happen. And it's an amazing job all around and a reflection of people to really create a place where we can live, work, and play all in the same area. And so, I'm hoping this evening that you'll really take this plan and run with it and get it approved tonight and get it before the council and get it approved again so that we can begin working on this project together, so.
Josh, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just from your perspective, you talked about speaking to longtime business owners on the Boulevard. Did you get a sense that those, although they're not required to kind of change the design of their buildings, that they'd be willing to kind of go there and consider that if the buildings are going up around them?
I think that they were looking for inspiration, and I think this plan is very inspirational. It's getting people very excited. And I know that partnering with the Lots Organization and partnering with the city in terms of helping people come up with those ideas for the facade improvements or, you know, it's as simple as maybe, you know, putting some lights outside or putting an awning up. I think with that partnership that we can make that happen. Certainly, the willingness is there. I think they just need a little guidance, and this plan is certainly guidance.
I agree with you, and I think that was one of our concerns, and Larry brought it up earlier, that, you know, you start doing this and it's so exciting and there's just the possibilities are endless, but if you've got people there who are not going to budge because they've been there for 60 years, it could affect the, kind of the overall ambiance of the downtown. So that's good to hear, and I'm glad that you're...
And certainly, we have property owners that, because the downtown has kind of lost its prominence, they're, they've been hesitant to invest into their property or their building. I think this is a chance to really show them that the downtown is coming back and that they need to place those dollars there, you know. As little as a coat of paint would help out a lot of these buildings in terms of bringing the downtown back.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Any other?
No more speaker cards, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Under that objection, we'll close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order on this matter.
I move to adopt resolution number, I should put my glasses on, 0819, recommending to the City Council, certification of environmental impact report number 0702, approval of general plan amendment number 0801, and the adoption of the downtown Lancaster specific plan, SP 08-01.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Comment?
Motion passes 5-0.
Very good.
Staff will look to try to get this calendered for the first city council meeting in September.
Give yourself a hand, Brian.
Yeah. Great job.
All right. Under new business, we have a couple of items. The first item is change of the start time for the planning commission. The staff report indicates that we've had discussions on this matter and have asked to have this resolution brought before us to change the, the resolution is 0823, to change the regular meeting time for the third Monday of the month to 6:00 p.m., and it would begin at our next regular meeting of September 15th. So, a motion would be in order unless there are speakers on this matter.
No speaker's cards, Mr. Chairman.
No speaker. So I move that we adopt resolution 0823 to change the meeting time of this body to 6:00 o'clock.
I'd second.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion passes 5-0.
Excuse me. The next item is item number six, which is a proposed vacation of excess street right-of-way. Do we have any speakers on this?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We heard a brief report of this in our briefing session. Would you care to make any comment on it?
No. Just very briefly, this is one of the steps that's necessary under state law for the city to vacate excess right-of-way. Your responsibility as a commission is to determine whether or not that vacation would be consistent with the city's general plan. As we've indicated to you in the staff report, we believe that it would be. This does involve property that was acquired a number of years back as part of the Avenue Well Overpass project.
All right. Thank you. A motion would be in order then on this matter.
I'll make a motion that we find that the vacation of excess street right-of-way at the location described is in conformance with the adopted general plan.
I'd second that. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is director's announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, as a result of some email conversations, and this is, it does affect, as we've noted, your adjournment, we would like to have the first special meeting or study session meeting, if you want to refer to it as that, of the planning commission in regards to the general plan update or revision. I tend to call it a revision at this stage, and we would look to do that on Tuesday, September the 2nd. I know that not all of you are able to be here for that meeting, but our intent would be simply to use that as an informational meeting, explain where this process has been, how it's come through the Citizens Advisory Committee, also explain to you their preferred plan, as well as some proposed modifications to that that staff feels would be appropriate. We think this would be a good starting point for your deliberation. That's going to take a number of special meetings over the next few months. It will not be until probably January at the earliest that you, as a commission, will be in the position to actually make a recommendation to the council on, you know, the general plan, and that's largely due to the environmental process that we're going through and the fact that we, hopefully, will have a draft DIR out for review beginning in October. But, you know, that's partly dependent on some of the traffic analysis that we've been doing and making sure that that ties in very closely to air quality and noise analysis. So, we would look, hopefully, to set the first and fourth Mondays of the coming months as those dates for those meetings. As I indicated to you, I know that not all of you are available for every one of those dates, but it is important to note that, you know, the commission as a whole is not in the position yet to really make a final decision. As far as the Tuesday meeting on September the 2nd, for those of you who may not be able to be present, staff would be more than happy to go through with you the presentation and the information at another time individually, you know, so that you don't, that you're up to speed with everybody else.
I do want to let you know, Mr. Lutowski, that I'm actually missing the first two. I have emailed Joy and said, oh, no, it's, but I am okay with the rest of them. I just want...
Okay, great.
Want to make sure everyone knows that I have great interest in this. I just had prior commitments that I've known about for several months, so...
Yes, without...
But I will follow up.
Right. Without putting too much weight or emphasis on it, I think it's probably one of the most important things that you will ever do as a commission, so...
Thanks a lot. I feel much better. I'll cancel my trip to Cabo now.
Mm-hmm. Sure you will. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Lutowski, and I think, as you pointed out, the time that we will budget for these items on the first and fourth Monday and possibly during the regular planning commission meeting, depending on the agenda. For instance, tonight, it's, what, 8:00? We've just slightly over an hour, and a portion of that was a specific plan, which took a considerable time, so, you know, I, if we limit, possibly limit our exposure to maybe a total of three hours, you know, 6 to 9 or something during those special meetings or, depending on the staff presentation as well as the community's participation in that, if everyone agrees. I mean, we don't want it to go on for an extended period of time, and after a while, you get pretty numb. But at any rate, appreciate that, and so, we will have what, about eight meetings prior to even consideration then, huh?
Yeah, and that's probably a good estimate. Not only are you going to obviously have staff presenting a lot of information to you for each one of those meetings, and I know there are several people, property owners, developers, who are concerned, they will undoubtedly want to give you public testimony on various aspects of the plan and things that they think ought to be considered, so that opportunity will be provided at every meeting also.
Right.
So, you know, not only taking input from staff, but you'll have the public.
Along that line, somewhat along that line, regarding potential conflicts, since this is a general plan revision for the entire community, which talks about land use for the entire community, I'm assuming, right, Mr. Lutowski?
Yes.
How do we deal with the potential, or is there a potential for conflict of interest in these hearings and decisions on the part of the commissioners, since they are not site-specific as an item like a tract map, or parcel map, or a CUP?
To the extent that the public generally is affected in the same manner as a member of the commission, there would potentially be no conflict of interest, but I'd be more than happy to address that on an individual basis as you go forward.
Okay.
I don't know how responsive that was to your question, but it's...
Well, it was a broad question, without being specific. I don't, we all live in the city of Lancaster, so if the general plan, land use, is being modified in our individual neighborhoods, would that mean we'd have to recuse ourselves?
Again, I mean, so long as, so long as what you're considering would affect the public generally in the same manner that it would affect you potentially, there would likely be no conflict. If there are, if you will be considering anything that will potentially affect an economic interest of yours that you believe is different than the public generally, that's something that we would want to take a look at on an individual basis.
Mr. Adams, would that include investment property? Would that be different than the general public?
No, and I think what you're looking at is, if you have an economic interest, regardless of what the economic interest is, if you have an economic interest, and the effect to, and let's say it's real estate, for example, if the effect to your real estate would be the same as the effect to real estate generally, there would likely be no conflict. The fact that it happens to be investment property would not, would not, would not change that analysis. However, the analysis may change if there was something specific that you were considering that would affect property that you had in a different manner than the public generally. So, and there's a rather sophisticated analysis for determining whether or not the public generally is affected in the same manner as you, so that's why it would have to be handled on a more individual basis.
So, over the next eight or nine meetings that we will consider this matter, then, likely would need to get involved with the potential of conflict early on. Would you suggest that?
As early as possible, yes.
All right. Very good. So, we'd be well advised, then, to address that matter as soon as we can, and to, and we have your phone number and email, so we can certainly communicate with you, and keep Brian in the loop on that as well, right?
Certainly. And I think I'll have some conversations with the city attorney's office also, indicating what we envision, maybe some of the decisions you may be called on to do. For, for instance, there may be situations where someone is requesting or asking you to look at a specific site, or a specific piece of property, and I don't know whether that's different than looking at something in a broad, you know, overall land use sense.
Well, some of the land use modifications are site-specific, aren't they?
Correct.
Well, we'll have a full plate, it sounds like.
I wouldn't want you to be bored.
No, thank you. We certainly haven't been, and, but it is nice to have a relatively early ending this evening. And before we adjourn, I just, I had a comment or two, or, if you have anything more, Brian? Nothing more from staff? Okay. Anything from the commissioners? I noticed in recent publications, in the media, commenting on the actions of this commission as related to approval of tentative tract map lots, actually, it was reported that the commission approved housing to be constructed over the last two meetings, and including, probably including this meeting. Actually, what the commission has done in the last couple of meetings, and tonight, for instance, when we approved tentative tract maps on item number three, we approved the ability of a property owner to subdivide their land into 238 single-family lots. Gives them the ability to do that within the rules and regulations of the MAP Act, and all the requirements. We did not, in fact, nor have we approved any construction of any homes. So, just to be clear, that's what we do. We do not, we're not in the home building approval business. Is that correct, Brian?
That would be an accurate statement.
All right. Just wanted to make sure. Everybody's clear. All right? And so, we are adjourned, then, unless somebody else has anything, or any public comments from the floor. I went right past that, I'm sorry. On any non-agenda items, do we have anything?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then we are adjourned till September 2nd, 2008, at 6:00 p.m., here, in this room, right?
Yes.
Okay.
For now, we'll make it here.
All right. Thank you.